Call our June 21 meeting to order and wanna welcome community members and students. And I see some staff out there as well. And so, thank you all for being with us. We're looking forward to celebrating with some of you students later on in the agenda. I am Rosie Lefler Kemp. I'm the vice chair of the board and I'm filling in for Chair Lowfold, who is excused from this meeting tonight. And David Kirby is filling in for Clerk Oswald, who is also excused for the meeting tonight. So, David, could you do the roll call, please?
I can. Dr. Eater?
I'm present.
And I'm here. Rosie Lefler Kemp?
Here.
Member Lowfold is excused. Member Oswald, member Sadowski?
Present.
Member Sandholm?
Present.
Superintendent Magus?
Present.
Assistant Superintendent Bonds?
Present.
Deputy Clerk Erickson?
Here.
HR Director Severance?
Here.
Board Secretary Paquette? Board Secretary Carroll?
I'm here.
And our student reps are excused. We have a call.
Okay, great. Thank you so much. So, the next item is pledge of allegiance. So, if everyone can stand and we will do the pledge.
Pledge of allegiance to the United States of America and to their level of liberty which it stands: One nation, under God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all.
Okay, so the next item on the agenda is approving of the agenda. But we have three different motions to amend the agenda. So, we'll need to vote on each of those motions. And then, we'll go back to approving the agenda. So, the first motion is to amend the regular board agenda to include the evaluation summary of Superintendent Magus. And we're going to put that at the end on 14 under other. So, I'm making the motion to amend. Can I have a second?
Second.
Okay. Any discussion? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay, great. Passes by zero. And then, the second motion is the motion to amend the consent agenda to include a field trip request for Duluth Public Schools American Indian Education Program on June 28, 2022, to acquire knowledge of the Ojibwe people in the Madeline Island area. So, that'll be under the consent agenda. Can I have a second?
Second.
Seconded by member Eater. Is there any discussion? Okay, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Okay, motion carries by zero. And then, the third amendment is a motion to amend the consent agenda. And it's to remove underneath the resolutions from committee reports, Resolution E. HR 6223899 probationary extension. Could I have a second?
Second.
Okay, seconded by member Kirby. Is there any discussion? Okay, all in favor, please say aye.
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 Motion carries by zero. Now, I need a motion to approve the agenda as amended. So, I'll move. Okay, can I have a second?
Second.
Okay, seconded by Paul. All in favor? Any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Okay, motion carries by zero. Okay, great. Now, we are on our favorite part of the agenda, the school and community recognition. And I'll turn it over to Assistant Superintendent Anthony Bonds.
Thank you, thank you. And good evening, everyone. Good evening, everyone. Members of board, tonight, I would like to recognize 17 wonderful students. So, please bear with me. As tonight's recognition will be a little longer than normal. First, I would like to invite, and he appears to be already here with us, Duluth East student, Jack Broadmore. So, welcome. Each year, 1 to 2 million students take the ACT nationally. Of those students, only around 4,000 to 5,000 students receive a perfect score. In Minnesota, around 50,000 students take the ACT each year. And only around 150 of them receive a perfect score. This year, Jack was one of those students. So, tonight, we want to recognize him for earning a perfect score of 36 on the ACT. Congratulations. You do that before you'd like to say anything?
Oh.
Congratulations. But I'm sure the board would love to say some things.
I would just like to say, just way to go. I mean, all those years of hard work and studies, just taking an interest in school and working really hard, it's paid off, I mean, with the score. So, excellent job.
Congratulations, Jack. That is pretty amazing. And you should be very proud of yourself. I'm sure your family is also. Best of luck to you going forward.
Where are you going to school?
East.
Where?
East.
No.
Oh, no idea.
Undecided.
You have time.
I'm a junior now.
Oh, you're a junior.
Yeah.
So, you got some time.
Yeah. I have some idea.
It's good that he's gonna go to East then next year, right?
Yeah, right, exactly.
We look forward to hearing where what the future holds for you. So, congratulations.
Congratulations.
And you're running too, correct? Next year?
I'm not sure. I might.
Yes.
He really likes choir.
Oh, choir's okay.
Thank you.
Next, I would like to recognize the remaining 16 students. I think most of them are here today. These students are from Duluth East and Ordine East. And these students are, and I'm going to apologize in advance if I butcher a couple of names, and I'll try my best not to. Michael Castal, Owen Folsinger, Garen Haber, Samuel Phillips, Grace Feaster, Martin Dahl, Tevin Rock, Emma Ambrosi, Claire Attella, Natalie Miller, Kenia Hoyt, Margaret Johnson, Hayden David, Lucy Decker, Parker Tenberg, and Giorgio Broden. So, let's all give them a round of applause. And you're gonna find out why. And I do have someone here who would love to share some information before I begin.
Okay, I'm Sudi Niall. I'm the program associate from the Minnesota History Center for History Day in northeast Minnesota. And just to remind you of what History Day is, it's like science fair for history. It is national, but it's also international. There's students from all over the world participate in this. And the chances of our students, any student, making it to national is .00004 percent chance. And we had five projects go advanced, six from ISD, seven on. And for some of them, it's been multiple years they've been doing this. But History Day is not a report. You have to look at the context, what was going on, what was the main event, and then 20 years afterwards, we belong and chart some effect of it. Some of them are interview people from Australia. Some of them have interviewed, tracked down authors of an obscure book to get their insights on slavery in the north central U.S. Some looked back into diplomacy, the dollar diplomacy, Iran-Contra affair, and looking at those kinds of things. But they're gonna get honored in a minute. I want to talk about the teachers. Because it is a teacher-driven program. I can't come into the school unless a teacher in that school is offering the program and they register. We worked like a park for a while. That teacher moved to a different school and the program kind of fell apart. So, I'm hoping it'll expand to allow more students to participate and take it from there. So, and this year, I would like it to minis that Glenn Tracy was selected as the middle school History Day Teacher of the Year in Minnesota. And that came with a $500 stipend. And qualified him for the national award as well. And then Catherine Nakmar at East, who allows it, both teachers, 7th grade teaches it. And then, they also have a history club. And at East, they have a history club that allows these students who want to get into it to do it. And all of you have done it, except one of you. Everybody has done it at least twice except for one person in this group. So, they learn the skills. It's learning research, multiple perspectives is part of the judging. They can't just show one and plow through. Say, this is great. You have to show different viewpoints. And they can choose website, exhibit paper, exhibit, documentary, paper, or performance, how they're gonna do it. Now, I will be quiet. I'm excited.
I just have a couple of things to say to all of you. I hope that you are so proud of your accomplishments. Forty-two people started and only the strong make it to the academic finish line. And there's no harm in not finishing because it's taking on extra. And there's been a lot of extra in our lives. And so, you took on an additional academic challenge, which I hope sticks with you, the stuff that you learn. I know in the classroom, there's a few carrots to help motivate some of the World History students, but not everybody here is in the classroom. We just hope to get them excited about history and historiography. So, I am super proud of what you've accomplished. I hope you're proud. I hope you'll come back. I hope to see you soon at East and participating in History Day. And then, I do want to give something to our regional support staff. Without, thankfully, Minnesota History Day is funded through various venues of resources. So, we have a pretty strong program in this state. And I have some flowers. And Natalie has also put this together. Natalie's participated in History Day for six different years. So, that's pretty amazing. Ms. Niall?
Oh, I'm glad I came today.
Like this, this one?
Yeah.
Well, I'll tell, but this one. So, our unique group of websites, Project at Nationals was chosen and showcased at the New Planet Word Museum in Washington, D.C. And so, their website, I'll show you about that later. But anyway, but their website was chosen for that honor. And our senior exhibit on the Duluth Model, which if you don't know what that is, you should look it up because it's received the United Nations Award, was showcased at the American History Museum. Thank you, everybody. I'll stop. And I don't know if, some of them might want to say something.
I would love it. Each would like to just briefly talk about what you did, your project.
Okay, my name's Natalie. I compete in senior research paper every year. And this year, I researched Women's Strike for Peace. I don't know if any of you are familiar with that. But they were a 1960s, mostly maternal organization. It was basically just advocating for like an end to nuclear testing during the Cold War. So, that was kind of interesting just because usually, like in past years, I've enjoyed doing research with, like around second wave feminism. And so, this year is a little bit of a shift while still being a women's movement. So, I really enjoyed that.
My name's Owen. And Michael and I did a documentary together on, like, it was, we titled it The Failures of Basic and Dollar Diplomacy, which were US foreign policies that were implemented by Thomas, or Theodore Roosevelt and President Taft during like the early 1900s. So, we evaluated like the effects of those and how it was just like an overall failure.
I'm Michael. I was with, I don't really have anything else to add to that.
I'm Grace. I did my project on the Duluth Model with my friend Markton. And we basically focused on the coordinated community response and the men's nonviolence classes and power and control wheel of the model. And interviewed six different people, I think, and went to Nationals, received seventh place for our category.
I'm Claire. I did a research paper as well with a lot of help from Natalie. I did it on the Iranian hostage crisis of 79 and just kind of focused on the history of how our relationship was like well past prior to that, like the 59 crew detail. I can't say that right. And then, also just like how it kind of is still kind of at a stale rate, you could say right now. And that was really interesting.
I did also a project on the Iranian hostage crisis with my friend Garen, who isn't here today. And Claire kind of said everything I was going to say.
I'm Margaret. And my project was on, we titled it Uncle Tom's Cabin Subjective Debate. And basically, analyzed the book Uncle Tom's Cabin and kind of like undercover the controversies about the book then through today. Like, I don't know if it helped people understand the reality of slavery or if it enforced racial stereotypes, basically just. Yeah.
Great job. Great work. Great work to all of you. So, I'll end with this because I want to make sure that everyone knows that Duluth Public Schools broke several records at the state competition. First, Duluth East had the most national qualifiers for any high school in Minnesota. Second, most projects from our region and most students with eight projects from Duluth Public Schools. First group, not individual, first group project from Ordine East, first sweep of the senior individual website category, two spots from East. And first student to qualify for senior state research paper three years in a row. And they've mentioned those individuals who received a place or showcase that is at the institution in D.C. So, congratulations to all of you and job well done.
It'd be great if you could put some of this on the Facebook page. The community here is not.
Adele is here taking pictures. And I think we want to get one.
I thank Mrs. Nakmar for everything she's done to help all these high school students succeed.
Do we need to tighten it up or are we good?
It should be in the photo.
Tighten it up a little bit?
So, this is Adele Williams. She's our communications person. And she will get it out in all the ways she can. But I know we have a DNT reporter here and another reporter. And we're hoping that you pick up on this story too. This is what our work is all about, is students doing great things.
Smile. Right there.
Oh, there you guys are.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Board members, do you want to add anything?
I just wanted to say thank you for being here tonight and sharing about your projects. And actually, my own kiddo was part of the History Day, did a project as well. So, I know how much work it takes at school, at the club, and then at home too. So, excellent job. And thank you to the teachers who have helped organize that.
Member Lowfold, I did receive some additional information about one of the agenda items. The contract for the clerical bargaining unit, they were unable to complete their vote today as planned. So, I actually would like to remove that item as well. I'm sorry for the delay. I'm letting you know.
Yeah, I think we need to go back to amend.
Yes, sorry about that.
Okay, so, I'm making a motion to amend under Resolutions A. HR 6223891, the clerical bargaining agreement. And could I have a second?
Second.
Second by member Sadowski. And then, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, and then, we'll have to go back to approve the agenda as amended again. So, I make that motion. Can I have a second?
Second.
Second by member Eater. And any discussion? Okay, all in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Okay, so, motion carries to amend, approve the agenda again. Thank you for that.
Thank you for the flexibility.
Yep. Okay, so, the next item is public comment. Patty, do we have anything under public comment?
I'll read the first part if somebody needs it.
Sure. And then, you have to read the. Sure, I can read the tools. Yeah. So, before we do the public comment, we just want to read the community vision and the tools for civility. And then, Clerk Kirby will go over the guidelines.
Community vision and priorities for Duluth schools. We will build on our shared beliefs and values of unity, high achievement, and responsible use of resources to create Duluth Public Schools and classrooms that are safe, supportive, and inclusive. We will work to inspire every student to achieve their potential and prepare students to lead productive, fulfilling, fulfilling lives as citizens of Duluth and the wider world.
Eleven tools of civility. This school board recognizes 11 tools of civility that will provide increased opportunities for civil discourse in order to find positive resolutions to the issues that face our community. These tools include pay attention, listen, be inclusive, don't gossip, show respect, be agreeable, apologize, give constructive criticism, take responsibility, be honest and care for others, show your evidence, share your reason.
Thank you. And then, David, could you read the guidelines?
Sure. Person has already signed up. If you have any handouts for the board, please give them to the school board secretaries located with their hand raised. Persons addressing the board will speak in the order in which they signed up. Each person addressing the board will have three minutes total. And I will raise my hand when you have 30 seconds left. I'm not going to operate the clock and cut you off when three minutes is up, about. Let's see. Persons addressing the board shall confine their comments to matters pertaining to the agenda or relevant matters of administrative concern. In the interest of respect for each public comment speaker, anybody out there, please hold any commentary during the speaker's time until they are finished. When speaking, use of names or any information that identifies a specific individual is legally prohibited, and you will be asked to end your comments.
Thank you. So, the first person is Karen McCormick. Hi, Karen. Welcome.
I didn't decide to speak until probably an hour or two ago. But so, I'm gonna speak from my heart here. And I'm a community member. Thank you administrators and school board members for hearing this concern that I have. Approximately five years ago, I don't know the exact time, but I came before a board meeting. And several people spoke about the contracting out of the pool. And Lincoln Park Pool and Ordine Pool have been overseen by Community Education and Xperia Swim Club. And to my best knowledge, there has been a huge opportunity gap for access to that pool. Underwear to most, I think that I've talked to, is that there are no lessons, no open swims, no lap swims at Lincoln Pool. And that's a gathering place for community. That's a place for a lifelong fitness piece. That's a place for our kids to get comfortable in our middle school. And I have some remedies for that. I think that it doesn't take a lot. I think it takes conversation and problem solving and some solution-based conversations. But I think it really needs to happen quickly because our students at Lincoln had no swim in the last two years. I know it was reintroduced at Ordine. And I just think that there is a large number of students who get to an uncomfortable either safety piece with swim as they become older and also because they are at an awkward stage in life. And if we can bring in our kids like we did in the past, when Xperia first came aboard, we partnered with Valley Youth and brought bands of kids up from Valley Youth Center. And they were able to access the pool. And they were staffed by Valley Youth. And we had some lifeguards from Denfeld Swim Team. And it was just a really nice collaboration. And I think that that is, all the pieces are still available for that. I think that things fall by the wayside when there's not a lot of attention paid to it. I think in some conversations, people have said that they felt like, even some of our older community members that used it as lap swim, that they felt that it wasn't a space for them anymore. And that just made me sad. I grew up in this community. I learned how to swim at Laura MacArthur. My kids learned how to swim at Marion Park. And I'm super happy Monday through Thursday, that kids out at Ordine are able to access from June to July. I don't have anything but good things to say about that. But I do think that our kids in this community out west, they need that too. So, please, please look into it. I'm a resource. I think several of you know how to get ahold of me as a person in the community. And I will definitely be around after the meeting if you have questions. I was part of the group that initially wanted assurances that this wouldn't necessarily happen. But I can see with everything else going on, how it has. And I would just really, really like to see it remedy soon. Thank you.
Thank you, Karen. And we'll make sure our staff are working on that. And we have your project information. Okay, great. Thank you. That is all for public comment. There were not any communications or petitions. So, the next item is a report of the superintendent. So, I will turn it over to Superintendent Magus.
Thank you. And I'm just gonna come on the screen here in cast. However, I would like to comment that our two school board representatives have their commitments and were unable to attend. And so, normally, we would be starting out with our student representative reports, which are always very lively and interesting. We told both school board reps if they wanted to include some items from June and July when they do their July report, that that would be totally acceptable. And then, we'll be going on. So, this is not my report.
It's based on the teeth on it.
Nope. My apologies. Here we go. And I'll make sure the right one's on Board Book too.
Yeah, I got it. I got it up on Board Book, too.
Okay, so the correct one's on. Okay, so, I'm gonna stop casting here. And start casting again. My apologies. They look pretty similar. So, we are gonna talk about a very important leadership transition. Update there. An update related to our Duluth leadership team, which had our, you could call it a retreat, but it's more of a work session earlier this month, last week. Brief update on where we're at with strategic planning. And then, a very brief placeholder for the superintendent evaluation, which will come later in the agenda. So, we have, I get a little choked up doing this, but we have a update related to our great CFO Kathy Erickson. It's a piece of big news, but it's also very. It's a piece of big news, but it's also very bittersweet for us. CFO and Business Services Director Kathy Erickson has accepted the position of Director of School Finance at the Minnesota Department of Education. This is actually the top position in the state for school finance, and we're very, very, very proud to have Kathy selected for that critical role for all of our students in the state. I'll share more, but let's give Kathy a round of applause. Kathy is not a person who loves limelight and attention, but it's hard not to give some, given the very, very effective career that Kathy has had before she came, but also the effect that she has had on Duluth Public Schools and our students. Kathy joined us in the fall of 2018. That period of time was kind of a time of financial turmoil. There were a lot of financial challenges for the district. And under her direction, the district has increased its unrestricted fund balance from under $400,000, $399,000 in June of 2018, to a fund balance of nearly $4 million today. So she has really righted our financial ship. She also, amongst many, many other things, led the process to sell our historical Central High School to a responsible developer, making sure it wasn't just going to the highest bidder, but we were very responsible in the work, and received special legislation through the lobbying efforts of her and others to allow for a new construction of our transportation center and administrative building, which saved our district millions of dollars now and millions into the future, which will go towards ways of supporting our students. So that is a very impressive career that she has had during her three years with us. Just as far as the process from here, we will be starting a very intensive recruiting and hiring process to fill very big shoes, takes hard work. That will begin immediately, where our posting will likely go up tomorrow with interviews for mid-June. But plans for transitional support, including future mentoring, are underway. And Kathy has graciously also taken deep responsibility. I don't, I can't think of a single individual that is more heartfelt in her resolution to serving the district. Kathy is here until, quite often until midnight, burning the midnight oil and waking up at four in the morning to do some more. And I've never, I don't think in my entire career I've met anybody that's worked harder for a school district than Kathy. So, thank you Kathy.
I just wanted to say thank you for, well, for hiring me back in 2018. This has been quite the journey. I have enjoyed so much of being able to be a part of Duluth Public Schools and all of the journeys we've been on together. And I'm so proud of being a part of so many amazing teams in this district. I work with amazing people. And I have a special heart for Business Services. That team has done so much, and sometimes we're the behind-the-scenes folks to make sure that everything runs well. And I just wanted to share with you what an honor it's been to work with this great group of people. I'd like to say a special thanks to Superintendent Magus for having some really great conversations the past couple days and into last week. This was a difficult decision, but as most of you know, my passion for school finance is a little on the nerdy side, and the opportunity to get to help the entire state of Minnesota is just an opportunity I just didn't feel I could pass up. So that just means I'll help others, but I'll also be able to help Duluth. So, thanks again for all you've done, for all the support, for the encouragement, especially board members who have taken the time to reach out during both our exciting opportunities and the challenges we've had. And I've appreciated every single one of you. I know she's not here anymore, but member Trinka was a key person on our Business Services Chair for all the years I was here. And member Eater stepped in this year and has done an amazing job in helping lead our team. Having that support at the board level and that commitment and level of understanding to be able to share, and all of the board members, I know it was a race to see who could be on that committee because it was so much fun. So, I appreciate all the work. And my phone will always be available, so if anyone wants to talk about school finance, whenever you want to, I'm available. And thank you so much Superintendent Magus for the opportunity.
An honor. Thank you.
Thank you.
Yep.
So again, we'll be working on that recruiting process, and if there is a gap between the hire of our new CFO, I would be working to support the many fine people that are in those areas, Mr. Spooner and Brett and Simone and Sheila and others. So, there would be support from Kathy, and we have a plan in place. If there are any other questions from the board or others, feel free to share them. Why did that just happen? Our Duluth leadership team, as I mentioned, we met the 13th and 14th last week for our retreat, which retreat and administrator speak means we all got together and worked on things and had some training and some team building. But some things that we focused on, we started with a staff wellness and mindfulness activity. You may know we're using the Calm app with our entire district. We have Calm accounts for each of our employees, but we started with, there was a gratitude mindfulness activity that we did with our administrators to make sure that everybody was signed up and able to use it and kind of model that use, and also as a piece of wellness and focus on employee wellness. We also reviewed some of the previous work that we've been focused on. We did some deeper definition of cabinet and clarified some decision-making structures and how things are working. We had a high-level review of our teaching and learning action cards. So basically, what are the big projects of the teaching and learning and equity team for the coming year? Kathy had a really great presentation on allocation of, strategic allocation of resources, what we will need to accomplish between now and December, so that we can, as we've talked about during the budget meetings, what we'll need to transfer as we move away from our ESAR spending and back onto a more stable budget in that regard. We had a team-building activity on relationships. Basically, it was a really fun activity. It was kind of, we have jokingly called it professional speed dating, where people sat face-to-face and they basically did a rotation through where people were able to meet about 40 people each from the administrative team. So there was an opportunity to meet and have conversation with almost everybody, get to know each other a little bit, and move on. So, that was really well-received. We also had our Center for Educational Leadership and the work being supervised by Anthony Bonds and his team focused on building equitable leadership teams and also focusing on coaching and supporting for instructional leadership development. Those were all part of the first day. The second day, we had our Human Resources Department did some training on our frontline software. We had another team-building activity that Director Severance ran on sharing of learning from previous day. And then we had some work done on learning, recovery, planning, and staffing, as well as the afternoon was basically kind of a supported work time for principals and others where we were all present in case there were questions that needed to be asked for wrap-up activities. But that was a very productive two days, we felt. Strategic planning update, and you've seen some of this before, but again, our strategic plan runs through the, will be running through the fall and focuses on assessing our current reality, describing the vision of what we're hoping for as a district, and sets that strategic plan in place. Since our last boarding, board meeting on May 17th, we had a drafting of our daily desired experiences in May, and then we continued that work, finished up the draft last week on Wednesday. We also, as I mentioned, there was the completion of the teaching, learning, and equity action cards with the administrative team on the 13th, and the business services and human resources action cards will be shared at our August retreat. I think those would be good for us to give as a summary for the board as well during a, maybe a committee of the whole or at another time. Also, we've talked to you before about the story wall work that we did with the community and the environmental scan. Those will be added to our, those were completed, and those will be added to our strategic planning website by the end of the week for the board and for the public to see. And then finally, superintendent evaluation update. As we know from the addition to the agenda, the superintendent evaluation board summary will be shared later this evening as one of our later agenda items. And that concludes my superintendent's report unless you have any questions.
Thank you. Any questions, board members? Comments for the superintendent?
I have a quick question. I was interested to see, there was about a month between you did, when you did the first, what is it, desired student daily experiment?
Experience.
Experience. And then you updated it a month later. Did you see some interesting shifts? Did you see some refining? Was it?
Yeah, I think we, I think, and I think part of the reason for the delay was the Memorial Day weekend and graduations and things that probably would have happened a little tighter if it wasn't the last weeks of the school year. But there was, the initial drafting was very inclusive and very well-done. I think at the end of it, there was a sense that we might have missed some of the community input and some of the flavor of some of the, we worked really hard, as I think we let the board know, Nate Smith and Adele Wellens worked to bring in a very, very diverse group of community members to make sure that we had kind of historically underserved populations being able to share perspective. So we wanted to make sure that those voices were, too, were included into the desired daily experiences. So I would say that was one of the bigger changes, was just making sure that those were really clarified. And then I think it also gave just opportunity to sharpen, sharpen the drafts and include other missing pieces that were part of the input. But I would say, too, that this draft is meant as kind of a straw dummy for us to present back to the public, to then have a lot of additional opportunity for input through survey, through additional work groups and additional drafting, so that those drafts will be truly a reflection of what the community is desiring as families, thinking about it both as parents and families being served by the district, but also their perspective on what their students need. Then there's also work being done on the student-desired daily experience that came directly from our students and was generated there. And then finally, staff, you know, what is our staff desiring? And so, the intention is, once we create a vision of where we want to go, then the annual action work that we do is building towards creating reality out of that vision that we have.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other questions or comments from the superintendent?
So it sounds like it's almost a living document for a while. Do you think you'll continue it past the strategic planning? Has it been a good way to collect information? Could you see that?
I think it will be important for us to continue as we do our work to really make sure that we have responsive communication back and forth with varied members of the community. I think always trying to make sure that we have as much outreach as possible is important. And an example of outreach that comes up is the Juneteenth celebrations we had just this past weekend. I know that Assistant Superintendent Bonds and myself and Director Crane and many, and Executive Assistant Paquette and many others were there. Adele was not there, but she was, had a, another, she was excused, but, sorry.
I have COVID.
Avoiding HIPAA violation.
I can say it.
She was exposed.
Right. But there were nearly 1,000, 1,000 community members who were there at the Central Hillside Park, and Mr. Bonds was running the grill, and we were packing food and back.
Those are nice pictures.
Yeah.
We served dozens of meals. But I think it's important for us to embed ourselves in the community so that when voices are shared, that they also have a relationship and perhaps a little more trust than just being a random administrator asking for something.
Thank you.
Okay. Great. Thank you. And there's one other thing.
Yes. And this is the annual Fred Hazy Scholarship selection.
We'd like to do a drumroll for this.
And since we don't have our student reps here, and since this is CFO Erickson's last meeting, and since she is always responsible for allocation of resources, I can think of nobody better to select from the bowl than.
And everyone's her student when it comes to school finance.
Yes.
So these are, we'll first start with East High School. And what we do is we select the winner, and then two names for runner-up. And the runner-up is in case the first one is not utilized, so.
Do we announce?
There'll be first runner-up and a second runner-up. I don't believe we announce the runner-ups from past practice.
I don't think we do either.
Okay. Make sure they're all in there.
It's responsibility.
Close your eyes. Oh, I broke the magic.
Sure.
I'm just a walking dreamer. And our winner from East is Elijah Kramer. So Elijah is the winner, and then we'll select runner-up number one. And I will not read the name, but I'll pass it on.
Eliza, a swimmer and a Nordic skier, I think, too.
Number one. That's the first runner-up.
I'm going to give him my address.
Here we go.
Thank you.
Thank you. And then we'll do our Denfeld winners. And actually, I think this is meant to be removed, so.
I agree.
Maybe not.
Cool.
Please don't let that reflect.
It is not.
Does anybody have super glue?
Probably the heat. Here are our Denfeld names. Our Denfeld winner is Durbin Keeney. Durbin Keeney. And I will, thank you. First runner-up and second runner-up. Nice. Thank you. Thank you. Here are our first runner-ups and second runner-ups. Thank you very much.
Okay.
Good job CFO Erickson.
Hey, good job. That's exciting.
Yeah.
Maybe somebody else should carry that.
Patty, you'll make sure it gets where it needs to go, right? Okay, great. Okay. Then the next item is just the schedule of meetings and events, and want to thank Patty, she always sends it out every week for us, so we have it available, but our, we have a special school board meeting this Thursday at 4:00 at United Health Group, a bid approval. And then June 28th, next Tuesday, is the rescheduled Duluth Public Schools retiree train ride at 2:30, and board members are welcome to go on that, just let Patty know. And then we will be adopting our new schedule for the year. And then we will be adopting our new schedule for the year, right? Will be, do we adopt that officially? No, not yet. Okay.
It should be posted to the website.
Okay, okay, for the schedule of the year. So our July meetings include the HR meeting on July 12th at 4:30, and then the Committee of the Whole meeting in July will also be Tuesday, July 12th. The Policy Committee decided to not meet in July because it would have fell on the 5th of July, so we're gonna meet in August. And then the rest of the schedule for the new year is posted. So thank you for your input on that as well. Okay, now we're to the.
If I could just add for the public or people listening, that in general, we selected Denfeld as our, as our high school location for this past school year. And for the most part, the meetings will be at East High School. So while we had the two years without a school board room, though, we're splitting between East and West. And I did see the foundation of our new board room has been poured, so progress is being made.
Okay, great. So are you saying our July meeting is at East?
Yes.
Okay, just to confirm. Okay. East, switch that. Okay, great. Okay, now the report of our standing committees, and just kind of a reminder for the public, these meetings of our standing committees are where a lot of board discussion happen, a lot of updates by staff happen to the board, and really, the, a lot of good discussion happens at these different standing committees. So they're all recorded, so you can go back and listen to more of the broader board discussions that happen at them on YouTube. But the first update would be from our Standing Committee of the Whole and Assistant Superintendent Bonds, if you would do that one.
Thank you. It would be extremely brief because we had only one item on the June 7th meeting of the whole, and that was a discussion regarding the SRO contract and provided an update regarding the recommendations that the advisory committee moved forward to the Police Department for consideration. So the discussion at that meeting was regarding the recommendations that was moved forward.
Any questions or comments, board members? Great.
Thank you.
Thank you. And then Member Eater, the HR and Finance Committee on June 14th.
All right, let's get ready. Okay, so we started out on June 14th at 4:30. We had no guest presentations for this meeting, so we went right on to departmental reports. And the first report that we had was from Director Severance on Human Resources, and you can find any questions. She does a great summary and it's attached to Board Book under the HR meeting. She gave, I think Superintendent Magus, you gave the report in June for HR because Director Severance was out recruiting for the district, I think. I believe so.
I don't think I did. I think Kathy did.
I think I did.
Okay, Kathy did.
Sorry.
But because we're out recruiting, the district didn't have people hired, so.
Thank you.
There's just some general updates and there's some benefit updates, hiring updates, and some positions that we have had, had open as of June 9th. We will vote on the fruition of the contract negotiations. The clerical, as we heard, has been removed from the agenda, will show up on the July agenda. Their union is finishing up voting, but we will have non-certified business administrators and directors units, correct? Am I correct on that?
Yes.
Okay, great. And then progress has been made for mediation date with the Firemen and Oilers Union, that's coming up on July 20th. And we are working on dates to start the negotiations with the Duluth District-wide instructional administrators. And we have contracts settled for the Assistant Superintendent, the Executive Director of Business Services and CFO, and those contracts have been approved by the board. So if you have any questions, you can check out the great Human Resources Report Summary or ask them now. Good, excellent. All right. Moving on, next we have the report from Business Services. We talked a little bit about where the, essentially where the legislature is and if we're gonna see anything in addition to support our public schools this year, and it is looking unlikely. So here's to next year. So that's what we know about Business Services and the legislative update. We looked at some projected average daily memberships, and those numbers have been holding pretty good for the last couple of months. We moved on then to child nutrition. Let me just make sure. And as of right now, our projected ADM is about 8,000, correct? Yep. We moved on to child nutrition. We now have, the summer schedule has opened up for child nutrition around, around Duluth, so we have food at, let me look, this summer, we have food at, they're gonna, it starts on the 20th, it ends August 19th. We have serving summer meals at Lincoln Park, Stowe, Lormack, Myers Wilkins, Piedmont, and Lowell. They're also going to be providing, we're partnering with some community groups, including Boys and Girls Club and ACO to help provide meals for children across the city. And you can get breakfast and lunch inside the school cafeteria. Meals are free for children 18 and under. We also talked about the dairy bid and the bread bid, and you can see that those two bids will be coming up on the consent agenda. And if you're interested in how much dairy our students drink, it's a lot. Next, we had our facilities report. You can see that we have our facilities report attached to Board Book. We've got some new employees that have come under facilities and capital projects. We're making capital construction. Denfeld Tower work is underway. We also have the Congdon Park windows are gonna be started in early June, and this is a project that was deferred from last year because of supply chain. Correct. Okay. Myers Wilkins has a small roof section that's gonna be completed this June, and we have just some general maintenance that's going on with painting all over the district. We're very excited because the new Denfeld Special Education Bathroom is gonna be ready once school starts, and we've seen that contract, and that came under what we budgeted for, didn't it?
Yes.
We're still doing some ongoing discussions about the track out here, Lane 1. Construction on the hill is moving along wonderfully. We've got some pictures earlier this week from Superintendent Magus. When I drive by from Piedmont to Scholastica every day, I see the progress being made, and it's really incredible. So that's great.
We are considering an option of possibly putting a webcam there so that the public can see the progress as it's.
I would nerd out on that. That would be really cool. All right, so, and then the also, the other thing that I thought was important is that they're doing some work at Lowell to look at radio signal strength at Lowell, so they're gonna be doing some work to make sure that radios work in Lowell. The next part, we had a project update from ICS, and Mr. Spooner came today to explain it to us and the public because there's some new language that we get to add to our vocabulary.
Yes, thank you, Member Director Eater.
Thank you, Mr. Spooner.
I'll try to be brief, but it's, we may have a few questions, but the easiest way I can think of to describe a change event, which you probably are wondering, what is a change event, would be to describe what we typically do today if I'm doing a project. So we'll take this building, for an example, Denfeld. We'll pretend that we wanted to replace all the windows. So I would have the project design, we would bid it, and I come to the school board with a contract, and we'll just save $5 million. So we award the contract, the contract goes to work, and they're halfway through and they find bad wood backing in half the windows. I'm just making something up. And let's say it's a $50,000 cost. So at the next month, I would come with a change order for $50,000 that would take that $5 million cost that you initially approved, it would be $5 million and $50,000, so the contract would go up by that change order amount. So we're all familiar with that method of doing work. Now, a change event for the construction on the hill is a little bit different in that in the initial bid that you approved months ago, and we'll, we'll just say 20 million, in that $20 million bid, there was allowances and contingencies built into that because at the time that we specified the project, we did not know exactly what was needed. And it was intentional that we did this because we don't wanna, let's say we believe there's 400 cubic yards of rock, but we get up there and we start digging and changes occur, and we only, we only take out 300 cubic yards. That 100 cubic yards that we paid for in the initial bid, we're never going to get a credit back equal to what we paid. We'll probably get 25% back of what we paid, so it doesn't make sense. It's better to get into the project for things that we are unsure of and then get accurate information, accurate bidding, and then charge that against the allowances or the contingency, which is already built into the base bid. So the numbers that you're seeing here for these change events do not increase the total amount of the contract. The contract stays the same. It's only utilizing a percentage of contingencies and allowances that were already pre-approved in the initial documents. And it's really an efficient way to do things. We know more of what we want, and we can get into the project and see we're more cost-effective and we're doing a better job for the district and the taxpayer. And I hope that explained what we're doing, and I'll open it up for questions if anybody might have any.
And these change events are expected, so we knew they were gonna happen, we're just leaving the details on exactly.
And we're into the project now, we're getting some change events, and depending on how many occur, I may be back next month or it might be two months before I'm back. But, and it's important to note that we're on track with the amount expended. We're not over budget, we're tracking perfectly, so it's nothing we didn't expect, these were planned, planned items.
And there's a detailed list of those. If you go onto the HR Business Services, you can see under ICS, they have all of the change events listed and what they're for and the exact amounts. And we were lucky to have ICS Nathan and Pat come.
Correct.
And answer questions at our Business Services Committee meeting.
It's important to note that Nathan and I and the design professional, we talk about every change event before it's approved, and it's well-vetted before the contractor goes ahead.
Great. Any questions for Mr. Spooner?
No questions, just thanks for that good explanation.
Oh, you're very welcome.
Someone who doesn't know a lot about that was helpful. Thank you.
Call anytime.
It would be great to get a little tour of the foundation, or if we can, come up there.
I can check. Superintendent Magus can vouch for me. It's a busy construction site, and we really need to provide training for anybody that comes up there, but we might be able to work something out.
And Mr. Spooner was kind enough to advise wearing old shoes. The crew also suggested that mid-July might be a really good time because there, you're gonna see some pretty significant change between now and that point, and it would be really, really an interesting time to come up, so if we can work towards that. And I just wanna say, I've always been impressed with Mr. Spooner, but he invited me up to, for the construction team meeting, and it's like, it's like 15 people working on separate, complex, three-dimensional puzzles that all come together and coordinate and look at Gantt charts and just, it's really quite amazing to see how that depth of project comes together and how many people are involved and how synchronized everybody needs to be with their collaborative efforts.
It's a lot of fun. If you like.
So, Mr. Spooner, so these change events were just kind of for this initial phase of the project, correct?
Correct. It's two days.
Right. And so are there kind of change events that are out there or planned for or that need to be considered at different stages of this process and this project?
There will be. We, we're tracking in alignment with what we expected, and we've got contingencies and allowances built into the original budget. I think we're right on track. I don't see us going over that original budget, but maybe we find who knows what. But we're, we're coming out of the ground, and that's the critical point. Once you get out of the ground, start swinging plank and standing plank up, your, the chances of finding issues are really slim.
Things are a little more straightforward then.
Right. When you're digging is when you find issues.
We spent a lot of time talking about rock at that meeting.
There's a lot of rock.
Yes, that, yeah, there's so much rock there in the hole.
And we bored a lot of holes, and the rock, you know, goes up and down sideways, and we, we found a lot of it, but we didn't find all of it.
Have you, has there been any delays because of just the construction industry right now and?
We've worked around them, there has been, but we've owned alternative product. Everybody is really working hard to keep this on track, and I expect it to stay on track.
Excellent. I've been very impressed with ICS.
They're really good.
Any other questions?
Thanks.
Yep.
You're very welcome. Thank you.
Mr. Spooner, I appreciate it.
Thank you.
He came special to share that with us.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Moving on to the Technology Department report, we did not have a report. We're in, for June, in July, we will have a report for May and June. We move on to transportation. In May of 2022, we have, we had 79 field trips, one of which Keegan Eater was involved. And then in June, we had 71, one of which Camden Eater was involved, so that's great. There was a lot of field trips this last couple of months. They've had no recently hired drivers. COVID continues to be a concern. They're working on that routine. General bus maintenance is ongoing. Our average fleet is 6.9 years, and we have a current average of about 77,000 miles. So we also are going to have summer school transportation, correct? And so that's going to be, for summer school, we have transportation to get our students to summer school, correct? And then extended summer school programming at Myers Wilkins, that will also be, we're also gonna have buses serving that. And then Mr. Johnson paid for lunch for all the bus drivers, and I just have a note that says amazing, so that's great. Okay, so that's, next, we have quite a few recommended resolutions. We will not have the clerical bargaining unit. We will see the NCBAA bargaining unit. We will also see the director's bargaining unit, correct? Director Severance, okay. And then we also are looking at non-renewal of staff. That is Agenda Item E3, HR 6-22-3898. And then we've gotten rid of the probationary extension, correct? We removed that from the agenda. Okay. Just wanna make sure I'm tracking.
Thank you.
We also looked at, we also talked about our MSH, MSHSL membership for FY '23. This is an annual application. Next, we also looked at resolution for donations. This probably will go up in July as our staff gathers everything that happened in June. June is busy in the Duluth Public Schools, but I do wanna point out that Northern Water Smokehouse did an in-kind donation for one free sandwich or salad donated to every employee at the Duluth Public Schools. We appreciate that very much from Northern Water Smokehouse. It's great to see our community support our teachers and staff. Next, we had our resolution to accept grant awards to the Duluth Public School, and we have a great one from the Northland Foundation for $10,000 that will be going to Denfeld High School. And this involves with implementation, implementation and hosting a summer arts, cultural, SEL, and academic camp. This is gonna be a project that gives us the opportunity to do some midsummer check-ins, some support, some supplementary services to approximately 70 students from the Duluth School. So that's amazing. Those are both high school students and middle school students. Next, we look at our HR staffing report. You can find that attached. We have our report, our budget summary. Then we have our fundraisers. This is Denfeld PBIS for $4,000. And then what I found fascinating was next, on to our bid for dairy for Kems from St. Paul to the tune of $268,000, $269,000, so that is incredible. That's a lot of milk. In those little teeny tiny little, they're so small, that's a lot of cartons. And so next, we have our bid for our bakery products, and we ended up with, was that Pan of Gold? And Pan of Gold for our, won the bread bid, so we will be voting on that. And then we also had, finally, our district-wide refuse and recycling, correct? Okay. So we have that attached. We also had a report from a change order. Where am I at? I'm losing it. Sorry, everybody, I got ahead of myself. Sorry, everybody, I got ahead of myself. Oh, under contracts, change orders and leases, this has to do with Ordine East Middle School Door Replacement. This is another project we had off for a while too, wasn't it?
Correct.
Yep, so we're getting that done this year.
It's all done.
Oh, it's all done, even better. And then we had an update from ICS and then an update from Holmer. Is there anything we need to add for any of those? Any questions on anything so far? All righty. And then we have some expenditure contracts that we signed today or that we had work on and then some grant applications and some no-cost contracts signed. So that was the HR Business Services Meeting. And Kathy, is that your last one?
No.
Will she be in July?
I may be at the July meeting just to finish up one thing before I go, so.
Okay, good. I'll get Sappy in that meeting, then I won't get Sappy. All right, thank you, Seth. We had a great meeting.
I'd just like to add one very brief comment. Very impressed with the Human Resources Department and others who have recruiting booths at the, at both Juneteenth events, at the Twin Port Celebration at Barker Island, as well as the Celebration Downtown. And we saw a lot of, a lot of people interested, taking flyers and I think that we, we may have some additional recruiting. And so I think that along with some of the advertising that Communications Coordinator Wellens is looking at with bus wraps and other things, we're really trying to break out of the mold with our recruiting.
Excellent. Thank you for adding that. I meant to say that, too. Thank you. That's awesome. I was just impressed how HR is really looking to change so we fulfill these positions. That's great, so I appreciate that.
Excellent. Any questions? Many of these items are going to be on our consent agenda that we'll be voting on. I will say I am not related to the camp dairy. I wish I was, but I'm not. My kids think we are, but we're not. We're the farm camp up in North Dakota. We do sugar beets. Okay, so the next committee is Committee I Chair, the Policy Committee, and I thank Member Sandholm and Member Sadowski for being a part of that committee with me. We met on Tuesday, June 7th and we had a couple first readings, 208 Development, Adoption and Implementation of Policies. It's kind of the policy on policies. And then the second first reading was 209 Code of Ethics and that's for school board members. And we did kind of review both of these back in April at our board workshop and we got recommendations from Ray Queener who facilitated that. And so we, we're going to bring these back to our July workshop for board members to look at again. So it's in the first reading. I know Superintendent Magus sent out to the board on June 7th some recommended changes also from Ray on both of these policies or particularly on, on the 208 policy. So you could look at that and again, this is the first reading of it. And then the policies for second reading, Policy 508 Extended School Year for certain students with individualized education plans. And just a reminder that this is a new policy. It supports our current practices and, but it's a new policy. And then the second B, 518 DNR, DNI Orders Replacing Policy 5160. And that is, it's to delete 5160, which again, DNR stands for Do Not Resuscitate and DNI, Do Not Intubate, intubate? Did I pronounce that right? So this is again updating this, this policy to be really more specific. And Jason Crane from Special Ed just really highlighted that the nurses really appreciated that it was really more specific as well. And then the next policy was 535 Service Animals in School. And there was a lot of discussion around this in the second reading and we decided to table it till August to get more questions answered. So we, we are tabling that. And then 615 Testing Accommodations, Modifications and Exemptions for IEPs, Section 504 Plans and LEP Students. This is a new policy. Again, we've, we've had current practices, but it is a new policy. So that was the second reading, no regulations. And then the last piece that was for information that everybody received was just the policies this committee has worked on this last year. And a kind of a reminder to all of the board that policies are our policies, not just our committee's policies. But we have a series of policies from 100 series to 800 series that cover different things and we've been trying to kind of do them in chunks through the year and that is, is our goal as we move forward. So just a summary as we wrap up this year's policy committee. So that, any other comments?
So I have a question on, on process or moving forward here. On that, the pet adoption or the, the policy on?
Service animals.
Service animals. Do we need to remove that from the consent agenda or from this committee's meeting? I mean, it's, it's under others, so it's actually not under second readings.
No, it is, it is under second reading and so.
Well, notes, three is policies for second reading, four regulations, five is others. So I mean, I don't know how that works. I'm just asking from a procedural standpoint, what do we need to do there? Do we need to do anything? If we're, if we're passing this all on the consent agenda?
We, I don't, was it included on the consent agenda?
All of our committee, the whole.
I should say. Let me see here. No, it was not included. So, so if you go to the consent agenda, it says which policies that we're approving in the first reading and which policies we're approving in the second. And so that one was removed because at the committee meeting, we decided we were going to hold it for basically a second reading in August.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Yeah. Thank you for clarifying that, though. Any other?
Jason, Jason Crane is going to chase down some information for us to.
We had a lot of questions and Jason was doing, had done a lot of homework on that policy already, but was going to continue based on our, our questions from the committee.
That's great.
Yep. Okay. So our, we will not be having July policy meeting, but we will be having an August 4th policy meeting before the committee of the whole meeting. And that'll be on Thursday, August 4th. So, and then again, the other items that we talked about will be on the consent agenda. So those were all of the committee reports. So the next item is just general board committee updates. And this is, many of us as board members serve on many community committees, a variety of committees. And so just an opportunity, if there's any updates from your particular committees you spend your time out in the community on. And while you're thinking about it, I can give a quick update. I serve on the Community Action Duluth Board with Member Oswell and we just hired a new executive director. So that's an exciting thing, Classy Dudley. And so we are looking forward to helping her become an executive director. And then the other committee I serve on, or one of the other committees is the Duluth Public Schools Endowment Fund. And you heard last month the many awards that we awarded to staff that will be used next school year. And I know our Communications Director has done a good job kind of highlighting these awards through our communications as well. But that's been always a fun committee to be a part of. I gave you guys a little room there to think about what you might want to say, if you want to say anything.
Well, I went to the Parks and Rec Committee meeting or Parks and Rec Commission and that one was actually, it was a busy week in all the graduations. So it was right before the East High School. That whole week is a blur from all the graduations. But Hockridge Nature Preserve kind of presented their mini master plan and so that was really interesting. I think it's just going to be a really great resource for our community and our young learners as well. And they definitely have an equity lens, which I appreciate it. And they also kind of presented the Duluth Parks and Rec Open Space and Trails Master Plan. And I'm kind of looking through some of the details here. They looked like where do we have park gaps? And they kind of examined that, which is really good for the US and our community and everyone. They looked at equity mapping. And then they, they looked at national trends and state trends too in their planning. So it was really interesting.
Great. I know many schools have already taken advantage of the Hockridge educator that they have in the fall either.
Yeah. And I was disappointed to miss the ER committee meeting because I had to pick my kiddo up at camp. So I'll get an update from you.
I could talk about the Intergovernmental Committee, which Member Lethal Kemp serves on as well. We meet every once a month by Zoom. And this month, the entire meeting focused around an issue of Lowell School, which comes up every couple of years, it seems. There's a lot of traffic congestion there at certain times of the day. And this committee consists of a couple of county commissioners, city council members, school board members. And at this time, Member Eater was present and Councilor Hobbs from the school, from the city council was present as well. And we had a presentation by the county traffic engineer. David Spooner was also present about that. And he would remind me because he's heard this presentation before evidently. But I found it very interesting. The highlights that I found was, found of his report was that a lot of parents think by lowering the speed on the county street that is, that the Lowell empties onto will probably not make any difference. That if you look at compliance, the studies they've done a couple of times, the compliance of this, of the drivers is within accepted range. There have not been any fatalities on that street. And that sightlines for people coming in and out of Lowell School are adequate according to the traffic requirements. We discussed ideas and possibilities of adjusting or changing the roads in and out of the area and who might pay for those, depending on what they might cost, and nobody knew for sure. The national trend, according to Victor Lund, is his name?
Victor Lund.
Victor Lund, yeah, is that people are driving their kids to school rather than using buses. And that is especially the case at Lowell and it has been especially, especially the case since the installation of the immersion program at that school. So rather than discussing speed, he thought that the real, the real concern is congestion and what can we do about this? No decision was made. It may partially revolve around the focus of that school as the place where the immersion program is or as a neighborhood school and all of the things around that. That's part of the discussion. And money, where would money come from to alter any roads? And there was some, one of the, one of the county commissioners said there may, he didn't say there was, may be some money available from the county, but that was, he was going to look into that. So this is an issue that focuses every couple of years with new parents, with the immersion program gaining more and more students. It has become more of an issue and that was the meeting. It was the entire, the entire meeting took place around that one issue. So more will have to be done. And I think that, my own feeling is that, I wouldn't say boundary changes, but the issue of boundaries with that school is part of the, will be part of the resolution, the final resolution of the problem.
We also were able to inform the county commissioners and the city counselors that one of the ways we as a district have worked to deal with the transportation, because we have students coming from around the district, is, is the bus hubs that we have had. And I'm not sure, I wasn't able to provide how many students are riding them, but I know that was one of the things we put together as a district. And I don't know if we have any information. We, later on, we can get more information on that for next year, but that seemed like it was new information to the, the school board member, or the city counselors and the county commissioners about that. So that's one of the values of these meetings is we share information with them and, and we really appreciated our facility director, David Spooner, being a part of that meeting and providing information as well. So, yeah. Any other committee reports? Okay. Well, we will have this on the agenda every month. And again, I just thank you all for the many committees you serve on from Head Start to many other groups in the community. The next item on the agenda then is our consent agenda. And again, many of the items from our committee reports fall underneath the consent agenda. And so just some highlights, we'll be approving the minutes from the past school board meetings, the various action items from our committee reports, approving the different policies and then the overall committee reports. So could I have a motion to approve that consent agenda?
So moved.
Could I have a second?
Second.
Okay. Moved by Member Kirby, seconded by Member Eater. Any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
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 Okay, the consent agenda then is approved. Now we have a whole list of resolutions that we need to read. And so all of you should have copies of the resolutions. And I kind of went and I'll give you a heads up on which ones I'd like you to share in reading, but going to start with Member Kirby reading B. And then Member Sadowski, can you read C? And then I'm.
I don't follow you.
Oh, I'm sorry, okay. The resolutions.
Okay, the 12, 12B, 12C, okay.
Yeah, 12B, okay, so.
Say that one.
No, we, we're not doing A because we, that's a placeholder, or we removed that. So David, if you could do B, which is the NCBAA Bargaining Agreement. There's copies of it in here.
Right, I'm trying to find that.
Yeah.
You all have copies in your folder?
We do, but I don't see the numbers that you're referring to.
They're right here on the bottom of the resolution.
Well, it's on, so 12C would be the number there on the consent.
Here.
Oh, I'm sorry, I'm not looking around here. I'm just pointing out.
We have to reference it. Or say, or say the name too. Say the name of this.
That'd be helpful.
Okay, it's the NCBAA Bargaining Agreement. It's the first one.
All right, I'll read that one. All right. Resolved by the School Board of Independent School District 709, St. Louis County, Minnesota, that the collective bargaining agreement between Independent School District 709 and NCBAA Bargaining Agreement, a summary which is in the hands of all school board members, be approved and adopted for the period August 1st, 2021 to July 31st, 2023 inclusive. And the chairperson and clerk of the school board be hereby authorized to execute said agreement on behalf of the school district. So I move the, that we pass Resolution HR6-22-3892.
Moved by Member Kirby. Can I have a second?
Second.
Okay, second by Member Eater. Any discussion? Okay, all in favor? Say aye.
Aye.
Okay, great, thank you. And then Member Eater, if you could do the next resolution, Director's Bargaining Agreement?
We don't have to vote on these individually, do we? We have that weird thing, I mean, no, but by, can we do these by roll call vote? I mean, I just seem to-
Oh, oh, let's do a roll call.
No, the only one we have to do a roll call is the donations one.
Okay, thank you.
Yep. We do have to do it individually, so.
Yeah, yeah.
So Resolution for the Director Bargaining Agreement. Be resolved by the Duluth Public School Board of Independent School District 709, St. Louis County, Minnesota, that the collective bargaining agreement between Independent School District 709 and the Director's Bargaining Agreement, a summary of which is in the hands of all school board members, be approved and adopted for the period of August 1st, 2021 to July 31st, 2023 inclusive, and that the Chairperson and Clerk of the School Board be hereby authorized to execute said agreement on behalf of the school district. That would be Resolution HR-6-22-3894.
Okay, moved by Member Eater, can I have a second?
Second.
Second by Member Sadowski, any questions? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
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 Okay, it is approved. And then the next resolution is a termination of certified probationary non-renewal staff. And Member Sadowski, could you read that one?
Sure. Whereas during the first three years of consecutive employment, all teachers in the public schools and cities of the first class are deemed to be in a probationary, probational period of employment, during which period the school board may renew or not renew any teacher's annual contract as the school board shall see fit. The term teacher includes every person regularly employed as a principal or to give instruction in a classroom, or to superintend or supervise classroom instruction, or as a placement teacher and visiting teacher. Now therefore, be it resolved by the School Board of Independent School District Number 709 at St. Louis County, Minnesota as follows. The employment contracts of the following probationary teachers shall not be renewed and their employment shall terminate at the end of the school day on June 10th, 2022, unless another date is indicated below, in which case the employment of the particular teacher shall terminate on that date. Resolution HR 6223898.
Okay, moved by Member Sadowski.
We have the placeholder.
I just have the placeholder.
I don't, we don't have the names.
Yeah, that's listed under the Business Services Committee.
Okay.
Okay.
Yep.
There's also the second, be it further resolved.
Oh, be it further resolved, the clerk of the board shall notify such teachers in writing before July 1st, 2022, of the termination of their employment.
Thank you, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Member Kirby, is there any questions or discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
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 Okay, motion carries. Thank you. And then, Member Sandholm, could you read the Minnesota State High School League? And I think if you just do the first resolve, the first resolve and the further resolve, that would be sufficient.
Can I, can I speak to something before I read this, just real quick? Since it ties into our, our participation with Minnesota State High School League. One of our state papers just this weekend, they've actually been doing a story on Title IX for a number of weeks or months now. And to me, actually, the amazing thing that they presented over the weekend was that in the state of Minnesota, we have the highest participation rate in our girls athletics in the whole state, or in the whole nation. So it's certainly something to be proud of. I know we do a good job here in Duluth. I want to thank all of our coaches, but especially all of our, our coaches of our girls in, in the sports that they participate in, because it's really important for so many young ladies. And it's important that we maintain our participation with the Minnesota State High School League. So, I don't see the number on here though. I got on the floor here.
Thank you for sharing that call. This is why I wanted you to read this one. I knew you would provide some interesting tidbits.
I don't see the resolution number on here anymore, or on the, or on the board book.
B 6223895.
Okay. Resolution B 6223895. Be resolved that the governing board of Duluth Public Schools, County of St. Louis, State of Minnesota delegates to control, supervision, and regulation of interscholastic athletic, athlete, athletics and fine arts events referred to in Minnesota Statute Section 128(c)(01) to the state of, to the Minnesota State High School League, and so hereby certifies to the State Commissioner of Education as provided for by Minnesota statutes. Further resolved that the high schools listed below, Denfeld High School, Duluth East High School, are authorized by this governing board of said school district to renew its membership in the Minnesota State High School League and participate in the approved interschool activities sponsored by said league and its various subdivisions. So I move Resolution B 6223895.
Can I have a second?
Second.
Seconded by Member Kirby, any further discussion on this?
Yay, Title IX.
50 year anniversary.
All in favor of this resolution, please say aye.
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 Okay, resolution passes 5-0. And I know it did come up that it would be great to have the activity directors come to a call meeting in the upcoming future just to really give a more background on all the different activities because it is fine arts, it is athletics, and their job is so much more than just making sure they, these events are, these activities happen. So that would be really great to have on a future call meeting. Okay, great. The next resolution is the one where we do need to do a roll call vote. And that is, and I'll read this one. So I move Resolution 6223896, Acceptance of Donations to Duluth Public Schools. Whereas Minnesota Statute 46503 requires a school district to accept donations by resolution expressed in the terms prescribed by the donor in full. And whereas acceptance of the donations in accordance with the donor's terms is in the best interest of the Duluth Public Schools, now therefore be it resolved that the Duluth Public Schools does accept the below described donations from said organizations in accordance with the terms set forth herein. Be it further resolved that the Duluth Public Schools wishes to extend its grateful appreciation to these various individuals and organizations. And Member Eater already gave it away, but all the Duluth Public Schools staff, the donor was Northern Water Smokehouse, and a wonderful donation. So I move this resolution. Can I have a second? Oh, yeah, second.
Second.
Okay, seconded by Member Sandholm. And then we need to do a roll call vote. Member Kirby.
All right. Member Eater?
Yes.
I vote yes. Member Lethlerkamp?
Yes, and I like the Cajun fin sandwich. Sorry.
Member Sadowski?
Yes.
Member Sandholm?
Yes.
Passes 5-0.
Okay, great. And I will just do a little note and say, when Superintendent Magus was kind of looking over Duluth, I gave him a recommendation to go to the Smokehouse.
And it was a great recommendation. Actually, many people who recommend it have recommended the fin, Cajun fin as well. Mr. Bonds, I, I furthered that recommendation, Mr. Bonds.
One of the best sandwiches in the city.
Oh, yeah, yeah, they are. And so, you know, do thank Lynn and Eric Gert, are also parents in our district. Their boys graduated the last couple of years. And so they're wonderful supporters of our district as well. So, okay, the next resolution is the acceptance of grant awards. And Member Sadowski, could you read that one, please?
Sure. Whereas Minnesota Statute 465.03 requires a school district to accept grants by resolution expressed in the terms prescribed by the donor in full. And whereas acceptance of the grant in accordance with the donor's terms is in the best interest of the Duluth Public Schools, now therefore be it resolved that the Duluth Public Schools does accept the below described grant from said organization in accordance with the terms set forth herein. Be it further resolved that the Duluth Public Schools wishes to extend its grateful appreciation to this organization. And that's the Northland Foundation for $10,000 for Denfeld. And it's Resolution B 6-22-3897.
Excellent, can I have a second?
Second.
Second by Member Eater. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, great. And then the last resolution, Member Kirby, if you can read, but I just want to preface it by saying, this is the adoption of our budget. And I wanted to say that we had many meetings, committee of the whole meetings for the board to ask questions, better understand the budget. And I want to thank again CFO Erickson, as well as her team, for the background work you provided with us and to us, as well as the work you did to reach out to our staff, to, to hear from our staff and help our staff also understand all the different ways we create a budget. So, Member Kirby, I just wanted to preface that.
Okay. This is Resolution B 6223902. Be it resolved by the School Board of School District Number 709, St. Louis County, State of Minnesota, that the fiscal year 2023 budget as presented to the School Board be adopted. I move this resolution.
Second. Okay, moved by Member Kirby, seconded by Member Sadowski. Board members, do you have any questions or comments before we vote?
Just that I really appreciated all the budget meetings that we've had, and especially taking the time to meet with me and other board members when, you know, I had to miss one. So really appreciate it.
I would, I would just, the other thing I guess I would just add to is I, I think it was just also really helpful the way we, we, throughout COVID, that we've been able to understand the ESAR funds and, and the different thinking behind how we spent them and that, and, and the charts that you had that went with it to back it up. But all of that information, again, is available for the public on our YouTube as well.
And it's beautifully color coded, which is awesome.
Any other comments then on the budget? Thank you all for great discussions at those meetings. So, Member Kirby made the motion, seconded by Member Sadowski. All in favor, say aye.
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 Any oppose? Okay, our budget 2023 has been passed. Thank you so much. I think we should stop on that one. This is a big deal for our board to, for any board to get this budget adopted by July 1st, so. Excellent. Okay, so the next item on the agenda is, oh, we got two more resolutions here. Okay. These are special resolutions. And I will read the next one. And this is the one declaring the first Friday in June to be National Gun Violence Awareness Day. And this is a resolution we have passed as a board the last, I think, three years. And really, I'm just going to preface it by saying, or appreciate the work our school district has done to educate our staff and our community and our families around gun safety issues. So really appreciate that. This resolution declares the first Friday in June to be National Gun Violence Awareness Day in the Duluth School District, to honor and remember all victims and survivors of gun violence, and to declare that we as a country must do more to reduce gun violence. Whereas every day, more than 100 Americans are killed by gun violence. And on average, there are more than 16,000 gun homicides every year. And whereas Americans are 26 times more likely to die by gun homicide than people in other high income countries. And whereas Minnesota has 462 of gun deaths every year with a rate of 8.1 deaths per 1,000 people. And whereas protecting public safety in the communities they serve is a high priority of the school district. And whereas support of the Second Amendment rights of law-abiding citizens goes hand in hand with keeping guns away from people that shouldn't have them. And whereas gun violence prevention is more important than ever as the COVID-19 pandemic continues to exacerbate gun violence after more than two years of increased gun sales, increased calls to suicide, and domestic violence hotlines, and an increase in city gun violence. Whereas in January 2013, Hadiya Pendleton was tragically shot and killed at age 15. And on June 3rd, 2022, to recognize the 25th birthday of Hadiya Pendleton, who was born on June 2nd, 1997, people across the United States will recognize National Gun Violence Awareness Day and wear orange in tribute to Hadiya Pendleton and other victims of gun violence and the loved ones of those victims. And whereas the idea was inspired by a group of Hadiya's friends who asked their classmates to commemorate her life by wearing orange, they chose this color because hunters wear orange to announce themselves to other hunters when out in the woods. And orange is a color that symbolizes the value of human life. And whereas anyone can join this campaign by pledging to wear orange on June 3rd, the first Friday in June in 2022. By wearing orange, Americans will raise awareness about gun violence and honor the lives of gun violence victims and survivors. Whereas we renew our commitment to reduce gun violence and pledge to do all we can to keep firearms out of the wrong hands and encourage responsible gun ownership to help keep our children safe. Now therefore be it resolved that the Duluth School Board declares the first Friday in June 3rd, 2022 to be National Gun Violence Awareness Day. We encourage all schools to support their local communities' efforts to prevent the tragic effects of gun violence and to honor and value human lives. And we did participate in, we had staff that participated in events on June 3rd. So I move SP 6223901.
Second.
Seconded by Member Sandholm. Any further discussion or comments? All in favor, please say aye.
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 Thank you, passes. And the next item, Member Sadowski, could you read the Resolution authorizing school board members attendance at NSBA Summer Seminar?
Sure. Resolved that, be it resolved that Independent School District Number 709, St. Louis County, Minnesota pay costs incurred as per district policy for school board members to attend the Minnesota School Boards Association 2022 Summer Seminar. And it's Resolution SP-6-22-3900.
Can I have a second?
Second.
Seconded by Member Eater. Any further discussion? That date, by the way, is August 4th. It's in the morning, 9 to noon, and it's a Zoom event, I believe. So you can still register through Patty on that. And it's always a really good event, I always participate. If there's no further discussion, all in favor, please say aye.
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 Any oppose? Okay, that one passes. Okay, so we're to the last item on the agenda, and it's other. And it's Evaluation Summary of our Superintendent John Magus. And I want to just say that our main job as a school board is to hire and evaluate our superintendent, provide guidance and support to our superintendent as well. And so really appreciated all, all the board members participating in this evaluation process. So I'm going to read our summary, Evaluation Summary. Superintendent John Magus. The Board of Directors of the Duluth Public School District completed the annual evaluation of Superintendent John Magus for school year 2021-22 on May 17th, 2022 in a closed meeting. All seven board members, Jill Lowfold, Rosie Lethlerkamp- All seven board members, Jill Lowfold, Rosie Lofler Camp, Kelly Derrick Eater, Alana Oswald, David Kirby, Alice Sadowski, and Paul Sadholm have served on the board during the 2021-22 school year and have been able to observe and be a part of the successes achieved this year. The evaluation focused on the achievement of superintendent goals. The board determined that Superintendent Magnus has done an excellent job of attaining the goal to effectively respond to the changing safety, learning, human resources, and communication needs of our students, families, staff, and administration during the pandemic. He is accomplished in his dedication, flexibility, and overhaul leadership, which was clearly shown during the ongoing challenges with continually changing conditions. His success at achieving the goal of developing and implementing a plan to increase support for instructional leadership and culture of supportive accountability was rated near accomplished and developing. Superintendent Magus worked diligently to build relationships with staff and families and within the community, and will work on building and sustaining a positive climate and culture at all levels. Excuse me. He will continue to be visible, listen, learn, and value all voices. Success in meeting the third goal, participating in the AASA Urban Superintendent Academy or other similar development opportunity was accomplished. Superintendent Magus shows enthusiasm and commitment to professional development opportunities in leadership and to his overall personal growth. Superintendent Magus illustrates strength in his ability to connect and communicate and problem solve, and has a strong desire to further improve staff morale and focus on bringing the community together in support of the schools. He is focused on advancing culture, climate, and trust in the school district, and recognizes the ongoing need for enhancement in these areas. We will be working with Superintendent Magus over the next several weeks to develop goals for the superintendent aligned with our district goals and look forward to working together to continue the success of our district. So on behalf of the board, that is our evaluation summary. And again, want to thank all board members and thank the superintendent for the reflection you did with us and, and the opportunity to have that time together to, to review. So, thank you, and I think we should give the superintendent a round of applause as we come up on his two-year anniversary with us.
Thank you, and I just want to reiterate thanks to the board, because as we know, this has been a challenge in two years for, for any superintendent. And being a new superintendent, having a supportive, supportive board who is also individually very much interested in promoting the well-being of the district has been huge. I've, I've worked with many districts with many boards, and I'm extremely impressed with the board members individually that we have, as well as collectively. I also know that there are, I, I look at life and our work here together as continuous improvement, and there, the work is, is never done. It's always about the journey rather than the destination as far as making sure that we're continuing to improve as a district. And I know that we have many challenges yet ahead to overcome. I'm also very, very grateful to an incredible team that I work with. I think that all of our principals, all of our teachers, all of our staff, the district administration, and so many others. Thinking about my, my executive assistant, Patty Pickett, has been very, very helpful, and I want to say thank you. Also, recognizing with the board agenda tonight, if there are three main goals of a board, which are to write policy and approve a budget and supervise and evaluate the, the superintendent, you've achieved the trifecta or hat-trick of, of super board governments tonight. Thank you.
Excellent, thank you for that. And that is, I was thinking about that too, and I was looking at the board agenda. We did it all. Okay, so can I have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Okay, moved by member Eater, seconded by member Kirby. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, we are adjourned.